I'd like to call the Tuesday, April 6, 2021 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Would you please call the roll?
Sunday, Mumgaard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of obligation?
We do.
The current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted over on the counter over there. We've got a couple of presentations tonight. First, I'd like to invite Deb up. Deb? Deb Gavan. So I mentioned last, I think it was last council meeting, we had a proclamation for our retirement and we said we want to start doing that a little bit more to recognize some great people that have been with us and Deb's retiring. So I've got a proclamation I'd like to read for. Honoring Deb Gavan upon her retirement, Deb began her service to the City of Papillion on March 6, 2006 as the utility billing finance clerk. And whereas Deb's years of service have included countless interactions with water customers and her professionalism has had a positive impact in customer relations. And Deb has conscientiously served the City of Papillion and its citizens through substantial growth in the last 15 years. And Deb has been nominated for Employee of the Year and previously received a special mention in response to her customer compliments on the mayor's hotline. Deb's work has been highly valued and greatly appreciated through her service with the city. Now therefore, I, David P. Black, Mayor of the City of Papillion, do hereby present this proclamation to Deb Gavan to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude for her dedication, commitment to the City of Papillion, and wish you the best in your retirement and future endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The other one, Tony Gowen, are you in the room? Come on up. Russ, you want to come up? And Dan? Kind of a dual presentation. Russ and Dan represent PVFD Inc. and it's been an important relationship with the city for, I don't know, 60 years, 70 years, how long? 74? Yeah, 74, 75 years. Up until about 12 years ago, it was the fire, the volunteer fire department that ran active response for fire and EMS for Papillion. They were the leaders in the entire state in paramedics and that program. And then, once we moved to full-time career fire and EMS, it stayed together as an organization and most recently has been doing a lot of community service and raising money and giving back through AEDs and those types of programs. Still involved in community service, still involved in life safety. And so, Russ and Dan, we just want to say thank you for that. The one presentation I've got, Russ has been involved with PVFD Inc. for 50 years. So I want to give you a little bit of a proclamation. It says, "Whereas Russ Zeeb has faithfully and continuously served on the Papillion Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., for 50 years, beginning May 20, 1971, and includes 35 years of active volunteer fire service to the City of Papillion. Whereas under Russ Zeeb's leadership, PVFD has donated numerous automated external defibrillators to the local community. And Russ has a high level of ingenuity and dedication to public service that is unmatched, and he has worked tirelessly for the betterment of the Papillion area, contributing to the health and safety of the entire community. Whereas Russ's work has been highly valued and greatly appreciated through his years of service to PVFD and the Papillion community at large, his leadership will continue to have an impact on the City of Papillion for years to come." And Russ has a presentation to make.
Thank you. First off, thank you. Thank you for everybody there. If I'd have thought I'd live to be 50 years old, I'd have been surprised, but it's been a long road. But real quick, what we'd like to do is make a presentation tonight, and I'm asking Dan Fuller to do that presentation on our behalf.
Thanks for allowing us the time. Congratulations, Russ. Well deserved. Dating back over 75 years, PVFD has recognized a local citizen for their support and especially for the community. This year, we are proud to recognize Parks and Facility Director for the City of Papillion, Tony Gowen. Anthony has worked for the City of Papillion for 28 years. Dedicated, his career began in the golf maintenance. He was promoted to Park Director in 2008. That seems like a long time ago and probably didn't feel like it to him. In 2015, he took over the Facilities Department in addition to the Parks. Tony served as a La Vista City Council member for over 11 years. Graduated in 1982 from Papillion-La Vista High School. Earned his Associate's Degree in Ornamental Horticulture and Landscape Design. Also earned a Bachelor's Degree in Leadership and is nearing his completion of a Master's Degree. Tony and Karen have been married for almost 34 years. Proud parents of two and two granddaughters. He's been involved in the senior center conversion to the PVFD since day one and continues with this effort. I know we're all very grateful there for all of his help and his guidance to the facility. He's a true asset to the PVFD and also a big asset for the City of Papillion. And so, congratulations, our friend, and keep up the great work and congratulations.
Thank you. One last thing, if I could, is I'm telling you, when he said Tony has been involved since day one, the night Dan Hoynes called me, he said, "Meet Tony the next morning," and we started negotiations and visitations and everything else. I think the word is probably for having to put up with me with some of the things, but thank you again, Mayor. Thanks for your support.
Ms. Powers, Administrators report, please.
Thank you. This year's annual resurfacing project is part of the pavement management plan kicked off yesterday. And just another reminder that the two areas that will primarily be focused on this year will be near downtown between First and Sixth Streets and the areas north of Highway 370 surrounding 72nd Street and West 84th Street. Mark your calendars for this year's Arbor Day celebration on April 30 at the City Hall Building at 1:00 p.m. And that's the actual City Hall Building, not the temporary City Hall Building. And the City of La Vista will be donating a tree to the City of Papillion in honor of its 150th year birthdays. And the theme for this year's Arbor Day is blossoming for 150 years. Another reminder that spring cleanup days are coming up. They will be April 19 through the 25th, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. each day. And finally, a huge congratulations to A.J. Warren from the Street Maintenance Department and Donna Montalegra, Manager of the 55+ Club, for being selected as this year's Employees of the Year. They were both nominated by their peers and provide exceptional service to the citizens they represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgaard, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Six yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is Item D1, Ordinance 1927, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R4 Multifamily Residential for the property legally described as part of the northwest quarter, Section 4, Township 13 North, range 12 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner of Turkey Road and Shram Road. The applicant is Celebrity Homes. Is there a councilman that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilman Stube. Item D2, Ordinance 1929, an ordinance to approve the issuance of General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2021, with principal not to exceed $9 million. Is there a councilman that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilman Klug. And as is normal when we're working with refunding bonds, staff does recommend a waiver of the second and third so we can get to market, and that does require a supermajority if it would pass. Is there a motion to waive the second and third readings? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Anybody want to speak? Okay. Any council discussion? Mr. Sunday.
Can you hear me now? Thank you. I do not feel like the refinancing of bonds rises to the emergency level that would necessitate deviating from our normal rules, so as I always do, I'm going to vote no on this motion.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Sunday, Mumgaard, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven yeas, one nay by Councilman Sunday.
Motion passes. So is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1929? Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Stube. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgaard, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. And just for the publics, we do get the questions once in a while. With that action, we did not extend the maturity dates of the bonds, so they still pay off in the normal amount of time, but it should realize about a $320,000 savings if we get the rate that we anticipate. Item D3, Ordinance 1930, same item, different bond issue, an ordinance to approve the issuance of Highway Allocation Refunding Bonds, Series 2021, with a principal not to exceed $2 million. Is there a councilman that'll introduce? Introduced by Councilman Jaworski. Staff has the same request of waiver in second and third. Is there a motion to waive second and third? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote. And again, this takes a supermajority.
Sunday, Mumgaard, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven yeas, one nay by Councilman Sunday.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1930? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Klug. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgaard, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. And again, as with the other one, this does not extend the maturity date, but should realize about $190,000 savings on the interest. Item F1, Resolution R210058, an approval to extend COVID-19 Emergency Paid Sick Leave for full-time and part-time employees. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210058? Motion by Councilman Ingberg. Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgaard, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F2, Resolution R210059, a resolution to approve right-of-way acquisitions for 72nd Street and Applewood Drive, Tract 2. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210059? Motion by Councilman Klug. Second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgaard, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F3, Resolution R210060, a resolution to approve the acceptance of a permanent easement from Raven-Northbrook LLC. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210060? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday, Mumgaard, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F4, Resolution R210064, a resolution to approve the Second Amendment to the Shram and Highway 50 subdivision agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R210064? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? If you'd state your name for the record.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of R&amp;R Commerce Park, which is just to the north, which is Development Services Corp. I just kind of want to explain a little bit of the background and tell you kind of why we're concerned. I don't know that we're necessarily a pro-opponent or a no-opponent, but maybe there's a layover chance to maybe talk about the traffic issues. But just so you understand, R&amp;R Commerce Park was the four-lot subdivision industrial buildings that we have there, just to the north. And we were obviously in there first. We built Gold Coast Road from Highway 50 to about just a little west of 146th Street. And then, of course, the Project Wizard, Project came along and they got their development in place and their subdivision agreement, it actually said that their temporary construction access would always be through Shram Road and not Gold Coast Road. Now, I understand with this amendment, they're adding, we always knew about the permanent access on Gold Coast Road, of course, right? What they're adding, though, is a temporary construction access location on Gold Coast Road in addition to the permanent one. And when we were working with Project Wizard, because they contributed to the first phase of Gold Coast Road, and I believe it was like $1,002,000 or something like that, they have already paid us, then we were negotiating with them to actually extend Gold Coast Road to 150th Street. And we had this agreement, really agreed to in principle, but then they weren't going to be able to get to 150th Street before we were, so we decided that we would just extend Gold Coast Road from where we left off at 146th Street to 150th Street. So, but what we did have was an agreement in place with the Project Wizard folks, and what we said is, because they asked us, as part of this agreement, part of their contribution, part of the extension of Gold Coast Road, is if they could have this temporary construction access on Gold Coast Road. And we said, "Well, we don't have a problem with it if it's west of 150th Street and if it is at the time that 150th Street is actually constructed to Highway 370," which R&amp;R plans on doing this year. We should have 150th Street if everything goes well tonight and with Phase 4. We have plans to construct 150th Street and get that connection all the way to 370 this year. So they agreed in principle to that concept because of the amount of traffic that would be generated by any kind of temporary access off of Gold Coast Road. And I understand there's another temporary construction access of 156th Street that will be added as part of this amendment to the subdivision agreement. But what they told us when we were going through our agreement is that they said they were expecting 1,200 cars on average daily on Gold Coast Road to come in and use that parking lot for temporary construction, which obviously caused us a lot of concern because we've got a lot of truck traffic and we have our own amount of traffic. And then there's, of course, you know, there's a new project on west of 150th Street on Mr. Torson's property, in the Corns addition, which is going to provide a lot more traffic as well. And so, we felt that 1,200 cars average was going to be too much until 150th Street was actually constructed to 370, and so you could diffuse that traffic, you know, more safely and not cause the bottleneck. The bigger problem also is that R&amp;R's been telling their tenants, of course, that, "No, there is no construction access." That was one of their concerns when they were going into those buildings, is that they weren't going to have any construction access in that leg between Highway 50 and 150th Street, and we kind of thought we had this agreement in place. And so, unfortunately, then we see this. And the only other thing I would point out is, in their original subdivision agreement, it actually does talk about the traffic engineer or the city engineer being able to request a traffic study even on the temporary construction accesses as part of their original subdivision agreement. So before they're granted that access, maybe something like that can be done. And like I said, if the timing is such that eventually they get one and 150th Street's there, and I don't know what their timing is as far as the length of time it's, they have to construct and finish their project, but I assume it's a lot longer than the end of this year. We just think it'd be a much better situation if we can get 150th Street installed from Gold Coast to Highway 370 before that temporary access is granted. And then we were hoping that it would be west of 150th Street as opposed to right in the middle of the R&amp;R's development. So that's the concern. I'm here to answer any questions. I've got a number of representatives from R&amp;R here as well, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Mr. Mumgaard.
I'll ask you one question. What do you want us to do?
Well, I think at a minimum, there should be a traffic study to show, because I don't know that the city necessarily knows how many cars they were talking about, because we were shocked when we heard the number. And maybe that's not the number anymore. I don't know if the 156th Street temporary construction access, you know, leaving some of that, I don't think any of us really know. So there probably should be some analysis done to determine what is the impact on Gold Coast Road if that temporary construction access is permitted at that location. Our hope, of course, is to, even though we didn't have a signed agreement with the Project Wizard folks, we thought that we had a pretty much of an agreement principle because they were going to build the remainder of Gold Coast Road out between 146th and 150th, and we were going to contribute to them as opposed to us doing it and them contributing to us. Turns out, we were able to get there faster than they are. So they said, "Look, we'll just contribute to your first phase, Gold Coast Road, and then when you guys do second phase, Gold Coast Road, 150th, we'll contribute that portion." So that whole concept of not having a temporary construction access on Gold Coast Road at east of 150th or before 150th Streets connected between Gold Coast and 370 kind of went out of the window because we never signed the agreement. But I think they understood our concern, obviously, because there's a whole lot of cars going in there. And the property west of 150th wasn't even on the table yet, so now you've got even more traffic that is looking to use 150th Street and Gold Coast Road. So maybe it's to delay that temporary access until such time as either they provide a traffic study to show what is the impact, and then we can at least talk about it intelligently about how many cars are anticipating what the true impact is to Gold Coast Road between Highway 50 and 150th Street. And if there's a chance, we could delay it until 150th Street is, you know, connected to Highway 370. It should happen by the end of this year. I mean, that's our intent, is to construct that. So I think that will alleviate a lot of problems as well.
So with respect to this item, are you asking us to lay this over for a specific or an indefinite time?
Well, maybe a layover, and I, you know, I don't know that we have a representative here, but maybe we can at least talk about, you know, moving forward, you know, we're not trying to hold them up. Obviously, we're not going to hold them up. They're, you know, they're coming out of the ground pretty heavily. But this was an issue that we didn't really anticipate and kind of caught us off-guard. And we talked about this in our negotiations on the contributions with Gold Coast Road, and they agreed that probably east of 150th and until 150th Street's connected to 370 that this could pose an issue. And maybe, excuse me, maybe they changed the number of car counts, but they told us, I think it was 1,200 cars on an average daily basis using that parking lot on the north side off of Gold Coast Road, which constantly was a lot.
Well, I don't have any trouble helping you out, but I guess maybe we need to, I'd like to know from the staff first whether, A, we need to lay the whole thing over to accomplish what you want, and B, what happens if we lay this over?
We'll go ahead and finish proponents and opponents, and then when we get to council discussion, I'll probably invite Mr. Sturzma up to maybe give a staff comment.
Right. And that's fine. And we're happy to work with them. We understand they're going to be constructing this development, this buildings and everything else. We understand they need workers to do it. It's just at that location at this time, without all the improvements and maybe a little too burden some for the infrastructure that's there today and the end-users that made promises that that wasn't going to occur. So that's it.
Do we have any other proponents or opponents? Okay, we'll move to council discussion. Mr. Sturzma, do you want to come up and share anything from a staff perspective? A little bit, I think, to follow up as Mr. Mumgaard's question or discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, if I take my mask off? I think I'm far enough away. I would say this, I know that the, for this project, they don't have a representative here tonight. They had some conflicts and they didn't realize that there was going to be a concern until it was too late to get somebody here. So, you know, I did not warn them that they should have somebody here. I know that they are very anxious to have this amendment approved. What they're asking for is additional construction access on 156th Street. There'd be two new accesses off of Gold Coast and 154th Street on the west side of the project, and then also this additional construction access of Gold Coast Road on the east side of the project, and that's the one that's adjacent to R&amp;R. You know, we're not privy to private agreements between parties. You know, the agreement between R&amp;R and Project Wizard that would have had the restriction on the construction access was not ultimately approved, not that we would have been aware of that anyway. But as we reviewed the request, and we looked at it from multiple standpoints, the most important of which was safety. Typically, we don't even regulate construction access in a subdivision agreement. If you think back a few years ago when this one was originally approved, we were trying to do a big project in a short amount of time. We asked them for information on their construction plans, learning some lessons from Facebook, where it's a big project, we need to contemplate not just end-of-day traffic, but construction traffic. They gave us a plan. At that time, they only anticipated construction access off of Shram Road, so that is true. Now that the project is well underway, I think they're learning more and we're learning more about how traffic flows in the area. I think as their phase of construction is now coming in conflict with some of their internal road patterns for construction workers coming off of Shram, they're looking at getting them in more directly from the north and the west. We always take a position of if you can diffuse traffic, that's better from a traffic flow perspective and better from a safety perspective than trying to funnel all traffic to one or a few locations. So looking at the concern of R&amp;R, adding this access very well may increase traffic. I don't know that counts. If you think about a three-lane road cross-section, that's going to handle about 15,000 to 18,000 trips a day. That's about 720 trips an hour. You know, if this does increase traffic, we still think that that road is perfectly capable of accommodating that level of traffic. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I guess, it's hard, maybe I'm completely wrong, but it's hard for me to sit here and see the size of the Wizard project and think that two weeks of laying this over for two weeks to further discuss it is going to be a major problem for them. So I'm inclined to just lay it over for two weeks and then instruct you and Mr. Jovan and the Wizard people to get together and see if you can work this out so that we don't have to make a decision on that. Do you see any problem if we do that?
Well, I will relay a request from Project Wizard, and that is if there is a request to lay it over, could it be broken down into parts? Because I know they are very anxious to get the access to 156th Street approved because, again, it's a matter of safety and based on the phase that they're in in their construction, that gets the material supplied at a much more efficient location.
Okay, well, I'll have to plead some ignorance. If we approve that segment and nothing else, lay the rest of it over, is that going to take care of Mr. Jovan's problem or not? Mr. Jovan? I don't have any problem doing it piecemeal either, if that helps people out.
You got a target there. I think that would solve the problem, and I think the access point is, it's a notation number four on the Exhibit F to the amendment to the subdivision agreement, but that's the one we're really talking about. The rest of it is, we don't have any problems at all.
Okay, do you need some time to work out how we split it, or do we, can we move forward now, or do you want to lay this, continue this till later in the meeting?
Mr. Mumgaard, I think you referenced this notation number four on Exhibit F as far as delaying that.
I'm going to ask Mr. Sturzma to do that. Don't ask me to figure that out.
Let me look at this, look at this.
Well, Mr. Sturzma's looking at that. Any other council discussion? Wait for Mr. Sturzma to clarify for Mr. Mumgaard then. Mr. Glover. Go ahead and push your mic again. There you go.
Okay. You know, if this is a safety issue, I think we need to approve it and move forward. It makes no sense to me that you still try to dump all that traffic in one spot. So, if I'm going to vote to move this thing forward tonight because I think that traffic needs to be spread out.
Mr. Stube.
I would concur with Mr. Glover. I look at the drawing that's part of our council packet, and there's five temporary access points that have been identified. And we're looking at dispersing one on Gold Coast and one on 156th. And there's obvious other streets that are getting temporary access. So, once again, I would think that if we approve this and move forward, if there's an issue in the future relative to the safety on that particular road, which, again, Mr. Sturzma indicated is designed to handle that kind of traffic, I think we would have the ability to shut it down at that time.
So, any other council discussion? Mr. Mumgaard.
Mr. Sturzma, do you have a motion I could make to split this?
It'd be an amendment. It'd be a motion to amend.
Right.
Councilman Mumgaard, I think if you made a motion that amended, where you proposed removing Number Four on Exhibit F1, what if we're delaying approval of that particular item? Again, four on Exhibit F1, that that would...
That's my motion, to delay that part and go forward with the rest of it.
So, we have a motion to amend. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Klug. Discussion on the motion to amend.
We can enable our construction, especially in these larger areas, or these larger complexes, to get less traffic where there's not designed to be, is a good idea. And if there were discussions between these construction sites before, I think we really do owe it to both companies to have the opportunity to have those discussions and work to an agreeable solution for both of them as opposed to us jumping in where we maybe should not be in the middle of private industry figuring out their problems.
Any other discussion? Mr. Ingberg.
Well, it strikes me that I think I'm going to fall on the side of Mr. Glover and Mr. Stube because I would think, as Mr. Stube said, Councilman Stube, I'm sorry, that if we approve it in total tonight, there's certainly no, it doesn't hold anything up. But we could always go back. If we find there's an abundance of traffic to the point where there are create safety hazards, we could certainly close Number Four if we need to or make whatever adjustment needs to be done.
Any other council discussion on the motion to amend? Mr. Sunday.
Mr. Jovan, if I could briefly.
Mr. Jovan.
So, Larry, my question is this. Would it be feasible for you to come back if there, if we pass this tonight? Would it be feasible for you to come back in a couple of weeks if it's a big problem and ask us to revisit it that way as opposed to delaying this and having a study and...
I think the problem is if it gets approved and the access is in, it's much harder to probably take it away than to wait till you have the adequate information with an impact study showing what is the true impact, what are the numbers of cars they're anticipating using that access point off Gold Coast Road. And so, I guess that's all we're asking for. And I think they can come in and explain, you know, is it still 1,200 cars a day or is because of these other temporary access, accesses that are going to be constructed that maybe that disperses it throughout the site? But no one knows the answer to that. All we know is that we represented to our tenants that there wasn't going to be any construction access to the Google site off of Gold Coast Road because that's what they always told us and that's what the original subdivision agreement said, is that all their construction activities would come off of Shram and not Gold Coast. So, you know, and again, we were in there first and we made these promises.
But in fairness, you know that you can't predict what this body might do in terms of future votes. If you made that assurance to the tenants...
True. But if you made the vote based upon actual information about them coming and saying these are the estimated number of cars, and we're not trying to stop their other parts of the accesses.
Right.
We're just talking about this one particular access point, which is Note Number Four on Exhibit F1. That's all we're talking about. And hopefully, and we've already had a number of discussions with them over the last, you know, probably six, seven months ago, where we were talking about constructing Gold Coast Road and our joint participation in the cost of it. So, there we have to be very aware when we say, "Hey, guys, we have this access point we talked about, having it west of 150th and not having it until we construct 150th Street to 370, which we're going to do this year. Is that a problem for you guys?" But also, how many cars now are really going to be using this? Because we were kind of surprised when they talked about the number of cars that would be coming in off of Gold Coast Road. And the only way in right now is Highway 50. So, the only way in and out right now is Highway 50.
Do you have a follow-up, Mr. Sunday?
No, no, I don't. Thank you.
Mr. Jaworski.
Stay up there, Larry. Stay up there. I told you you were going to be a problem tonight. Okay, so we'll go to entrance number one. It's 2,200 feet west of Highway 50. And then it says entrance number four would be 1,800 feet west of Highway 50. So, you're really only talking 400 feet?
No, but that's not the point.
I know. What I'm saying is if we got an access at one, they can still get into their property without access four, right?
Well, I don't think access, well, I don't know their timing, but access number one is a permanent access.
For you guys?
It's a permanent access for them. We know about that one. That was always contemplated. I don't think that they, I don't know the timing of the Starby access number one, which is their permanent access. What they're talking about is a temporary construction access, which is Number Four, to allow people that are working on the structure and the building and site to use that, not their, not their permanent one. If they were using their permanent one, I suppose, I'm not sure what we could do technically. I don't know. But this is strictly to allow construction vehicles to access the site to actually construct the building and the other site improvements, which, again, it was told to us, I believe, that it was about 1,200 cars daily.
But that's temporary and that's going to eventually go away then?
And they know it's going to go away. Yeah. It says it right there. If you look at the note, it says temporary access location for construction, parking, and trailers will be located a minimum of 1,800 feet west of Highway 50. So, Number Four is not permanent. Number One is permanent. That's the kind of main entrance into the facility. And we know that, and we're okay with that.
It's, well, I'm trying to think here on if it's going to be temporary. What's temporary? A year, two years? Six months?
Well, again, another point that we don't, we don't know the information. We don't have it because I don't know how much longer, and maybe someone on the council knows or maybe the staff knows. I don't know if they have three more years to construct the site, four more years, if it's 18 months from now. I just, I don't know that anyone knows. That's why the layover is really to gather more information, find out the actual number of trips that they think are going to come in off of this access number four. What is their timing on construction? And if it's three or four years, well, we're going to have 150th Street constructed to 370 by then. That will make a huge difference because, you know, now you have multiple ways to get in and out of this particular site. And again, we don't have any issue with the other temporary construction access points that they're asking for with this amendment at all. Or the permanent one, which is Number One.
Okay.
Mr. Stube.
I guess I would just make a point also is that it came up when Councilmember Jaworski mentioned it, is that they're allowed to have the permanent access on Gold Coast, and they don't have it available at this point in time. So, that's a given that they can have that. So, what we're looking at doing is just provide, because they don't have access to the permanent one, which I'm assuming will be constructed, this gives us temporary use of a access point off of Gold Coast for construction employees because, obviously, based, again, on the drawing, it shows that materials, equipment, and everything else is going to be delivered at some of those other temporary access points. It won't be at that access point, Number Four, based on the drawing that I have in front of me. So, again, I think it's, to me, I think it would be okay to go ahead and approve this. I believe that if it becomes an issue, the city has the ability to put up some restrictions relative to that temporary access.
Mr., any other council discussion on the motion to amend?
I...
Mr. Sunday.
I do. I think I've kind of changed my mind. I'm convinced now that if the applicant wants us to do this, they should be here to tell us why it needs to be done. We've got somebody here that's telling us why it shouldn't be done right now. I think we should listen to his valid points that he's raised. And I'm going to be with Mr. Mumgaard on this one.
Any other council discussion? If not, please vote. And this is on the motion to amend, to remove Number Four.
Sunday. Mumgaard. Glover. Jaworski. Klug. Stube. Ingberg. Four yeas, three nays by Councilman Glover, Stube, and Ingberg.
Motion to amend fails. So, we're back to the main motion, and we're in council discussion. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Sunday. Mumgaard. Glover. Jaworski. Klug. Stube. Ingberg. Six yeas, one nay by Councilman Sunday.
Motion passes. Next is Item F5, Resolution R210065. A resolution to prove a dedication of a portion of Tax Lot 1A2 as a public right-of-way for Centennial Road. So, a motion to approve Resolution R210065. Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion. Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgaard. Glover. Jaworski. Klug. Stube. Ingberg. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F6, Resolution R210068. A resolution to prove a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the south half of the northeast quarter of Section 35, Township 14 North, Range 11 East of the 6PM. Starby County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of Highway 50 and Gold Coast Road. The applicant is Development Services Corp., R and R Commerce Park, Phase Four. So, a motion to approve Resolution R210068. Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Klug. Any proponents or opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgaard. Glover. Jaworski. Klug. Stube. Ingberg. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F7, Resolution R210069. A resolution to approve the Third Amendment to the R and R Commerce Park subdivision agreement. So, a motion to approve Resolution R210069. Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion. Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgaard. Glover. Jaworski. Klug. Stube. Ingberg. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F7, Resolution R210069. A resolution to approve the Third Amendment to the R and R Commerce Park subdivision agreement. So, a motion to approve Resolution R210069. Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion. Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgaard. Glover. Jaworski. Klug. Stube. Ingberg. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F7, Resolution R210069. A resolution to approve the Third Amendment to the R and R Commerce Park subdivision agreement. So, a motion to approve Resolution R210069. Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion. Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgaard. Glover. Jaworski. Klug. Stube. Ingberg. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. F8, Resolution R210070. A resolution to approve authorization for Papillion Volunteer Fire Department, Inc. to host mobile food vendors in the parking lot of city leased property. So, a motion to approve Resolution R210070. Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Klug. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion. Mr. Jaworski.
Mr. Zeeb, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear. Please.
Real quick, how are you going to let everybody know when you're doing this? How is that going to get out so people know?
Well, both by social media and through the neighborhoods and stuff like that. Hopefully, in the next few weeks, our new permanent sign will be up. We can, you know, have the food vendors be available Friday night, six to nine, whatever type deal, stuff like that.
Cool.
But we'll leave all that up to the vendors themselves.
Okay. And you're talking at the fire, where your fire station is, right?
Talking for the museum.
Yeah, yes, yes. That's what I meant. Yes. Okay, cool.
Mr. Mumgaard.
Points one, is there any payment being made for the people to use the parking lot?
We're not requiring payment. We're asking for donations. And donations will be placed and funded by AEDs for the community.
Okay. Secondly, we're talking...
Sorry, let me just say one more thing on that.
Sure, please do.
We will give a list of that to the city administration. We discussed that after we came over, but maybe once a month, you know, this, we can get that type of deal.
Yeah, do that because, obviously, this is a public parking lot, and having a private organization such as yours gaining, you know, getting money off of use of the private parking lot doesn't sit well. So, if they want to make donations to a very worthy cause like that, that's fine. And then, secondly, we're talking about the front parking lot and not the two little lots on the side, right?
That's correct.
Okay, I don't have any problem with parking cars in the two lots on the side, but they're across the street from houses, so no trucks over there.
Yeah, I would say if a vendor has a personal vehicle or pickup, they want to park there or a microphone park there, that type of deal, that'd be it. But there would not be any vendors applying to it.
I'll say, I talked to half a dozen of the neighbors up behind you, and they all are kind of excited to see what you can do. So, let's see how it goes.
We're excited about it. We're excited to put money back in the community. You know, I think that's a big thing there. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sunday. Mumgaard. Glover. Jaworski. Klug. Stube. Ingberg. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. It's all the regular agenda items. Committee reports, public works met tonight. Chairman Ingberg.
Committee met tonight to discuss some follow-up on the public improvements we've been talking about east Second and North Jefferson Street. We had asked, directed the staff, had asked them to make some contact with the owners of some of the businesses in that area regarding a cooperative trash collection system to help clean up the area. And in return, the city will consider making some public improvements in the area to go along with improvements we've made on 84th Street previously and also be in conjunction with quite a few of the buildings down there and the businesses are making some substantial improvements and renovations. So, the next thing that will happen is once the cooperative trash location is finalized through the businesses that will be affected, primarily on the east side of 84th Street, once that occurs, then we'll come back probably to the council for consideration of expending the funds to do the improvements in the area. I should say, too, that the money is already set aside as a budget item. The only thing that will happen if we are able to go forward with this project is, I believe the city administration is going to separate that out, the separate item, to kind of make it clear to the full council the amount of the money and where it's directed to.
Thank you very much. I don't think any other committees met. Any comments from the floor? Yes, sir. If you, when you come up, if you'd state your name for the record.
He's back. My name's Jim Pumphrey, I live at 1906 Windcrest Avenue, I think it was your second meeting in January, I approached the council requesting that you consider amending the animal ordinance to allow chickens, and about two weeks later, three weeks later, I sent a inquiry and was told that no council member had expressed anything, and the matter was dropped. At the meeting, I believe Councilmember Mumgaard expressed some interest in that, and talked to the city attorney at the council meeting, and city attorney indicated that it would be better to rewrite the whole entire animal ordinance. I don't know how much you know about chickens, but if you buy eggs today, the other day I went to Hy-Vee at $1.97 for a dozen eggs, a lot of people don't realize it, but when they say farm-fresh eggs, once an egg is laid at the factory plant, the company has 30 days to put that egg in a carton, and then the store has another 30 days to sell it. So when they say farm-fresh egg, it could be as old as 60 days before you get it to consume. About three years ago, somebody had a mini pig escape, and there was a big hullabaloo in the newspapers about little Porky, and city council passed an ordinance to allow those people to keep Porky. I think sometimes there's a, there's a thing that people think that they allow chickens...
Actually, the ordinance, the ordinance did not allow the, the mini pig.
I, the way I read it, I...
No, no, mini pigs were not allowed, and that was, and that ordinance was revisited when that situation came up and it was not approved.
Oh, because, because I read a thing that said mini pigs were allowed.
No.
Allowed, I don't know which ordinance I was reading then, but, but anyway, chickens make virtually no noise, the morning doves, the robins in my yard, the cardinals in my yard will make more noise than those chickens. The only thing I would ask is that you, you know, put some reasonable rules and regulations, City Bellevue has them, City of Omaha has them, just because you allow chickens in the backyard doesn't make us a hick farm town, it makes us a town that listens to the residents and addresses the needs of the residents. Right now, there's a lot of people that are hurting, and anything they can do to try to pinch some pennies, this would be sustainable for the lifetime. Whether you know it or not, there are people in the city right now that are raising chickens, evidently you haven't had a lot of complaints about it, because I know they're still raising them. I want to stay within the code and do what is right according to code and not do it under the counter. So I'd appreciate again, you visiting this and look at allowing us, again, it will not make us a hick farm town, it'll make you a progressive town that listens to your citizens.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? If not, any council comment, oh, go ahead. Name for the record.
Edward Weniger, uh, could you describe, I think he kind of summarized it, but could you describe the process of what that would take to get done, what he's asking for?
Yeah, um, I want to be a little careful when we get to comments from the floor, because it's not a published agenda item, so under the Open Meetings Act, we really can't talk about, started dialogue, but to give a general education to the community, I think it's okay to, to explain process. So a change to an animal ordinance, when, when the, when the community's looking at actions we take, every vote we take is either a vote on a resolution or a vote on an ordinance. A resolution is just more of a general policy statement, signing of contracts and those types of things, and those we can do pretty quick, it's just, we handle it in one evening, there's a motion made, we have discussion, and we pass it. When we're talking ordinances, ordinances are actually changing the law, and so there's a higher bar when we get to this, and so allowing chickens would fall under changing an ordinance, and the way the process works to change an ordinance is, there has to be a council member that basically sponsors it, and if you follow our agendas, we have items for first reading, and I ask if, is there a council member that will introduce? That's what we're doing at that point, is there a council member that will, that will basically stand up and say, yep, I'll sponsor that item? And so once an item is introduced, then we don't do anything with it that night, we wait two weeks, now it's out into the public realm to know we're getting ready to talk about and potentially change an ordinance, and so then two weeks later is the second reading, and that's the public hearing, when we call for, anybody want to speak either for or against this item, and that's the second reading of the ordinance, we don't take any action with it that night, unless there's a waiver of it, which we generally don't do. We wait two more weeks, and then that's when we have the third reading, and the third reading then is open council discussion and debate amongst the council, after they've contemplated for a month what they've heard, and then take the vote, and then if it is passed, if there is not an emergency clause, then 15 days after that then is when the law takes effect. So it's about a six-week process from the point of introduction, but prior to it being introduced, the council member has to have already worked through what is that resolution, so there's a lot of time upfront trying to think what is, what is it they want to change, getting it into an ordinance form and getting it forward, so it's not a fast process. Generally, and this is just general, it's up to the council members, generally, you probably won't see a council member introduce something unless they're pretty confident they've got a second, because if we get to the third reading and there is not a second, the whole motion dies, Robert's Rule of Order. So usually, if they're not confident they don't have that second, they usually won't introduce it, because they, they get, what's the point, kind of? And then a lot of times, they would have already wanted to work with their peers to understand, do they even have a, close to a majority to get a vote, so kind of a long process to get to a first, but until there's a first, it's really not a public process, just a council member contemplating something, so general education.
Mr. Mumgaard.
Yeah, can I just add to your explanation and answering that question? I think I'm the only council member sitting here who's ever voted for the chicken ordinance, for the mini pigs, so the answer to what would it take, find four other council members.
Any other council comments? If not, just a few, oh, Mr. Jaworski.
Yeah, I'm going to make Tom Mumgaard the liaison of the food truck at the antique place, so he, he lives in that neighborhood, you can send out emails to everybody telling us what, what's there for the night, how's that sound?
There you go, just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks, we're continuing the calls with the health department in regards to COVID, but we were not doing them weekly like we had been, the, two weeks ago, we stopped the weeklies, we're doing them on the first and third Tuesday of every month, so before council, we actually get a more recent update, so today was the first of the bi-weeklies of, on the COVID. So again, if you've got questions, concerns, or issues, it's about 1:00 on the first and third Tuesday, we have that call, let us know, and we can get those questions, questions to the health department. We continue our weekly calls as the United Cities of Sarpy County in regards to legislation that's going on. Again, all of the bills that have been, all the bills that can be introduced have been introduced, all of the priorities by the committees, by the individual senators, and by the speaker have now been set, that's out on the website of the legislature, so if there's some specific legislation you're following, you can kind of get the status there, and if you want us to keep an active eye on that, make sure we're aware of that, because we do have weekly calls on Monday in regards to those items. The wastewater agency met, took probably our first real action, there was an approval of an agreement for some discharge for the project that Facebook just announced for their additional phase south of their current buildings, that will hook into the new wastewater system, and then the agency is also working on, with property owners for right-of-way acquisition for the new main lines to get down to the treatment plant, so some of that work is continuing. Also attended Sarpy County Economic Development Board's meeting, and the other big thing we're monitoring is the ARP Act, I forget what ARP stands for now. American Recovery Plan, it's the latest incentive that was passed by the, by Congress, and if you followed that at all, there's quite a bit of money going to be flowing into the economy, and some of that is direct grants to the, to every state, there are some that are direct grants to counties, there are some that are direct grants, I think, to schools, and then there is some that is a direct grant to every city and village in the, in the United States, so every city and county in the United States will get a grant as well, and so we're monitoring what are the proper uses of those funds and how much will we be getting, so we've been on, staff's been on a number of calls to understand, I don't think it's totally clear yet how that money can be used, so we're, we're keeping an eye on that. Just like anything with government grants and FEMA, there will probably be a lot of record-keeping that we gotta, we gotta do with that, so, and I think there'll be a couple of years, it'll come in two tranches, two payments, and it'll be used over a couple of year periods, so we'll keep you informed on that. I think that's most of the updates, again, reminder, Public Safety Committee has a meeting on the 20th before city council, and there's a hand, there's four council members that we want to have a brief meeting with after this to give you an update on city hall renovation. Any other council comments?
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Stube, please vote.
Sunday. Mumgaard. Glover. Jaworski. Clug. Stube. Ingberg. Seven yays, zero nays.
Motion passes, the council members that will be getting a city hall update will meet in the art room in just a few minutes, thank you.